Oh, that would be... That would be, I mean, or at least get a recommendation on it. See what he thinks.
Yeah. I know, it's like, there's loads on the agenda. All right.
Yeah.
All these on me?
Thank you.
There's a few more.
Thanks, sir. I'll get down to it.
Thank you.
That is...
Yeah, that was hopefully...
Yeah. He didn't say more. Yeah. He's out there in a car.
Yeah, he just, he just came.
He's thirty-four.
Yeah. Yeah, that's all.
What's on?
Huh?
And on the other ones, is there gonna be a setting number for city number? Just the time? Okay.
How much you do?
And... Okay, and the motions for the other ones? Is there anything that I've ever... What am I looking for? Okay, okay.
Would you call the vote, please?
Robert Kraus.
Present.
Jason Blair.
Here.
Melissa Hunt.
Here.
Terry Kavner. David Roberts.
Here.
Here.
Mark Cam.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Here. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item two is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held May 4, 2015. Item B, approve ratified, the end, ratified claims and expenditure, excuse me, for FY 2014-2015 in the amount of $3,103,39 and 10 cents. Make motion to approve. All right, thank you. Second, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote if there's no other discussion?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Cam.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number three is receive an update from John Johnson with the Association of Central Oklahoma Governments, ACOG, on regional transit project for central Oklahoma and discuss the next steps.
Honorable Mayor and Council, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to be here and bring you a little bit of context and information about where we are on regional transit in central Oklahoma. And I want to thank more and each of you for participating in the leadership and the continued membership of ACOG in this endeavor. I think it's very important for us economically as a region to think about and plan for regional transit. And it has a very long glide path, so we're going to be doing a lot of things and it won't seem like we're buying tickets to ride the train for a while, but eventually we'll get to do that. So, I have a few images that I hope will tell the story a little bit. If you look at the landscape of central Oklahoma, thirty-seven cities, we're in six counties, almost a million-two people, and 600,000 jobs. From 2000 to 2010, we had historic growth in central Oklahoma, and we're continuing on that pace. So, we'll add another 400,000 in population and another 200,000 in jobs over the next decade, which means more people. Where are we gonna put those people? It also means more jobs, but sort of the other side of the coin is, and you know this well, more traffic. Your wonderful interstate highway out there, which feeds Moore and southern central Oklahoma, is a situation that ODOT has advised us, we're not gonna be able to expand the capacity of that facility. They can't afford to buy the right-of-way, and they're not gonna build three more lanes on top of what's already there. So, we have to begin, I think, to explore in central Oklahoma what are going to be some alternatives 20, 40, 50 years down the road. When you have all that traffic, then you're going to get more emissions, which creates for us an air quality issue for the region, not just for the city of Moore, but all of the cities in the region, which will significantly impact and constrain economic development. So, we wanna try to get people out of their cars if we can, and that's a big goal for regional transit. There are some well-defined needs for people who need regional high-capacity transit, and if you look around the country, you can see peer cities that we compete with economically, sort of where they are in this process, we're a little bit behind, but we are planning and we are hoping to make some strides. And there are lots of places, certainly west of the Mississippi, who have cultures very similar to ours, who have implemented and enjoyed some success with regional transit. Now, we're kind of a one-horse state, and we like to pull our horse right up front and tie it in front of the store, but I think as we see these increases in population and jobs, we're going to have to begin to explore that there are possibilities to move people around in different ways. And when we're talking regional transit, it's all of those different modes. It's commuter rail, it's bus, it's streetcar, it can be light rail, but it's all high-capacity. And for central Oklahoma, one of the options we looked at is commuter rail from Norman to Edmond, going through Oklahoma City at the intermodal hub. Now, I just wanna show you kind of a snapshot across some of the cities that are developing regional transit and the relationship between funding, what kind of vehicles you can put on the street, and then what the ridership is. So, and Denver's at the top, and we're sort of at the bottom of this list, but we're just beginning. And that translates into a lot more vehicles than we have, and it also translates into a lot more people riding that regional transit. Another aspect of regional transit is every place there's gonna be a station will be an opportunity for transit-oriented development. And we hope that all of the communities that have signed up, and you're one of them, one of the six core communities, are going to have stations and have some opportunities to enjoy and expand transit-oriented development. So, again, just to give you some context of why is anyone thinking about regional transit, and who cares in 2015? Well, in 2025, we're going to care a lot more, it's going to be a lot more difficult to get around, and we need to plan and begin to put these systems in place. Now, we've been working on this project since 2005, believe it or not, so we're a decade in, and there have been some accomplishments. There is a station that's been purchased as the hub in Oklahoma City, and all three of the corridors will come to that hub. It's a two-way street, bring 'em back too. And we completed a commuter corridor study, which included your community. Again, you're one of the six core cities that were part of the start of this progress, and the corridors run to the north, again, to Edmond, and to the south through Oklahoma City, Moore, and on to Norman, and then out east, the corridor is the Midwest City and Tinker Air Force Base. So, we have strong information and a basis to begin designs and plans for these three specific corridors. And we now have the legislation in place that if the cities desire to go forward and create a regional transit authority, we could develop and outline a district which would include all of those improvements and ask the people within those districts to impose some sort of revenue stream to pay for this project. This is going to be an undertaking, the likes of which we've not had in central Oklahoma, so it's going to be sticker shock, both from the capital costs and then the operating costs will be forever. So, I just wanted to come tonight and say thank you for your leadership and participation in this regional transit effort, and to be here and answer any questions that you may have. If you've heard something or if there's information that we need to be able to clarify for you, then I wanna do that. So, again, I don't wanna bogart anymore of your time, but I do wanna be here to answer your questions as we go forward. The next step, I think there's a proposed memorandum of understanding that we've given, and hopefully your legal counsel can wade through that, so that all of the six cities who are the partners can agree to hold hands to form this task force to get us to the point where we can create that regional transit authority. And that'll probably take us two to three years going forward.
Now, you already know that I'm in favor of this, 'cause I was one of the first guys in the 2005 deal when we first talked about this, but this has always kind of bothered me. When you show that map on transit, why don't, why don't you have a rail system going from the airport to downtown, where people wanna travel to and from?
Well, in the 2005 study that you're talking about, the fixed guideway study, there were ten corridors that were developed conceptually.
Well, they were focused on the downtown to Tinker, if I remember right, that was their main one, but they were focused on because they could get tiger transport and there was an existing railway, if my memory serves me, which I think is pretty good. But I think it should've been the opposite, it should be going from the airport, where everybody lands and takes off.
Right, and there are lots of proponents for it going to the airport, but in terms of the numbers, talking about employments and de-employments, as opposed to the largest single-site employer in the entire state, at Tinker Air Force Base.
But you're not, this is the problem I had with it before. You're not gonna drive from Moore to downtown Oklahoma City to get on a train to go to Tink Air Force Base. It's just not gonna happen. 'Cause, first of all, you get downtown, there's no parking. You get to Tinkers, there's all kinds of parking down there. So, I don't see that as a good route myself, but that's just me personally. I love the idea, it's just I think we need to talk a little more about the routes, 'cause if you wanna build convention business for Oklahoma City, which benefits Moore as well as Oklahoma City, I think you need something from the airport to downtown, downtown to airport. Before you go...
I don't disagree, well, I think that would probably be the next corridor that gets developed, but this group of the original six that's gonna put money in the deal and is gonna govern the deal is gonna get to make that decision.
Well, you know, I mean, it works really well if you have all of the corridors in place, where you can go from Norman to downtown Oklahoma City, then back to Tinker. That would make sense, but just to drive down Oklahoma City and get on, it's like, that doesn't make sense.
Well, and you understand, we can't build it all at one time. I mean, the costs are so prohibitive that it'll take 20 to 40 years to sort of flesh out those other ten corridors. But what the priority is for those and what makes sense to the group that's governing that board, that's what will have to happen.
Well, as long as we get a station, I'm okay with it.
Well, I can't imagine that you would not have a station, and I'm sure we all know pretty close to where you'd want that station.
Yeah, by the train track.
That's where all the stations are gonna be, is by the BNSFs. If we can get them to agree to let us lease their tracks.
At Fourth Street is where, where we're thinking that that would be very likely. Oh, absolutely.
Well, and I think those are things you need to be thinking about, and, and you're gonna have to, and we're gonna have to, develop park-and-ride places where people can, at a low expense, come and park their vehicles to jump on the regional transit.
And drive under the railroad track. Exactly.
And drive under the railroad track. Well...
Working on that too, Ron.
And those are real cheap bridges, too, that we built.
Would it be fair to say that our forefathers got smart of themselves when they did, and why would they interrupt?
You know, I, I don't feel that I'm competent to answer about our forefathers. I probably wish they hadn't done that, but in, in terms of how the auto became so popular and everybody wanted to drive, I think that was the death knell for that interurban. But now, we're sort of at the flip side of that coin. We've got congestion, too many cars, all those problems, so now we're gonna be pushed back to regional high-capacity transit. And it just happens to be commuter rail from Norman, Moore, and north. It's going to be a streetcar, probably out east, so not everyone's going to have the rail at first.
So, that would actually, this route that runs through Moore would actually be on the existing railroad tracks?
It would, on the BNSF right-of-way. That's, that's what's there, there's, there's a hundred feet of right-of-way there. And in other places around the country, BNSF has wanted the public sector to build another set of tracks for 'em that we could use and they could use. So, all of those negotiations have yet to take place, but we'll be forthcoming.
Appreciate the update.
Okay, we invited, we invited John to be here to give you that, because at some point in the near future, we'll have agenda items dealing with the memorandum of understanding and outlines what our participation monetarily would be up in, up till the point that this regional transit authority is legally created. Right, right. A task force and a memorandum of understanding is sort of the precursor to develop all that, and the nuts and bolts would be in that memorandum of agreement to actually create what will be a new geopolitical entity regionally. We don't have regional authorities much, some, but not for transportation. So, we look forward to the continued participation of Moore and the leadership you've provided. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number four is consider action, receive bids, consider for approval or rejection, resolution number 82215, awarding $5,875,000, City of Moore, to Oklahoma General Obligation Bonds 2015B, to bidder whose bid is determined to offer the lowest interest cost.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Eady. As always, it's great to be here. The reason we are all here is, as you may remember, today was the day that we accepted bids for $5,875,000 worth of your bonds for the bridge project that were authorized by the voters in November. I have passed out the results from the bid, you should each have one, and I am prepared to kind of walk you through that. What we do is we award based upon the bidder that's going to charge the taxpayers of the City of Moore the least amount of interest possible, so that's how they bid. And so, you can see, we received four bids. Wells Fargo was the best bid, they're gonna charge the city $914,376 of interest. That is, equates to a 2.19 interest rate. DA Davidson was the second bidder at 2.27. The Baker Group here out of Oklahoma City was third at 2.29, and Hutcheson Shockey out of Chicago was the fourth bid at just under 3%. We had gone into today with kind of an expectation, when we went to the voters with this initiative, our firm, Chris Gander and I, had proposed or projected that we would get 2.5% interest rate on, on this bond issue. So, 2.19 is good, it will be a lower impact on taxes than what we had, we had talked to the voters about. You can turn to the second page and see that, you know, it's kind of hard to complain about borrowing almost $6 million for 12 years at 2.19%, but you can see, it's actually, you know, the third or fourth highest out of our last five, so interest rates have gone up a little bit. But again, a very, a very good attractive rate, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I'd certainly recommend the lowest and best bid.
Okay. We have a motion?
Make a motion, that, uh, for the wooden bid to Wells Fargo Bank.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other comments, questions, or remarks? Not, would you call for the vote?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Cam?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number five is consider action, approval or rejection of resolution number 82315, providing for the issuance of general obligation bonds of 2015B in the sum of $5,875,000 by the City of Moore, Oklahoma, authorized at an election duly called and held for such purposes on November 4, 2014, prescribing a form of bond, providing for registration thereof, providing for levy of an annual tax for payments of principal and interest on same, designating bonds as qualified tax-exempt obligations, and fixing other details of the issue.
Mayor, I'll take that item if you'd like. I, I need to get a new spiel on this resolution, I, I, I'm getting redundant, but every city that's ever issued general obligation bonds has been required by the Attorney General to adopt a resolution in this exact same format. It's a template, and the only thing, the least bit unique about this resolution is on, on page 10, section 8, you are committing to not issue any more than $10 million worth of bank-qualified obligations during the remainder of the calendar year. With the issuance of this bond, it takes us right up to our $10 million limit, and we will not be issuing anymore. That is an incentive that allowed us to get the type of interest rate that we got, and so that is why we are asking you to make that covenant and that agreement. I'm certain Mr. Hawkins would be happy to answer any questions as well, but this is the standard resolution you have approved many times before.
Make motion to approve.
All right. Thank you, both. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on these items? And I want people that are watching on TV at home to know, this is not something we're just doing tonight, this is that project that you voted on a year ago, so we're finalizing it. With that being said, would you call for the vote, please?
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Cam?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number six is consider the approval of the final plat for Silverleaf Shopping Center, located in the northwest quarter of section 13, Township 10 North, Range 3 West, being south of Northeast 12th Street and east of Eastern Avenue, application by Eastern Crossings LLC. Let's see, Planted Commission recommend approval of this, 80.
Mayor and council, I did receive word late last week that the applicant would like to withdraw this application. He's looking at some other options and improvements for that area.
Okay. Then we'll move on to item seven. Item seven is consider approval of the lot split application for Lot 1, Block 4 of Avondale Edition, addition being located south of Northeast 21st Street and east of Northeastern Avenue, application by Greg McAllister.
Mayor and council, this lot split is located east of Eastern Avenue, it's south of Northeast 21st Street in the Avondale Edition. This is some Eastern Avenue frontage that was zoned C2 neighborhood commercial with the neighborhood rezoning application plating. City water and sewer are available to this site, and access is from Eastern Avenue. It's Africanman's approval of this application. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Next, may the manager approve? All right, thank you. Second, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Cam?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number eight is consider approval of the job description for Assistant Community Development Director placed at Pay Run 68 to replace the vacant Development Services Manager's position.
Mayor, council, we are asking you to approve a revised job description for an existing position that's currently vacant in the Community Development Department. This is a position before was at Development Services Manager, that was over the building inspections and building office. With the vacancy, we felt like we needed to make some upgrades to the position in terms of not only who it supervised, but also to be able to get a person who has their qualifications in place and their state licensing in place, if not already, that they can quickly. And we've struggled with this on and off, frankly, for a number of years with regard to finding individuals in the world who don't already have a good job and have worked somewhere that have these qualifications and have the required licensing by the state of Oklahoma. So, what we're asking you to do essentially is to upgrade the job description, upgrade the pay level, the current pay range of 60 is what the job is currently, that's a starting pay of just over $48,000. The pay range 68, which is the new, is a starting pay range of just over $59,000.
That's quite agile.
It is, mayor. We're asking, we're, we're going to have this position be the direct supervisor, not only for building permits and building inspections, but also of code enforcement, which is another area that we have lots of activity in. We're also hoping that then will free up Elizabeth and as a Community Development Director to be more involved in the planning part of things rather than the day-to-day activities.
Do you guys have somebody in mind that can do this job?
We do, we do not. We'll be advertising for it out to the public.
Is this okay with you, Elizabeth? Do you really wanna give up all those responsibilities?
Yeah, I mean, why would you wanna do that?
I can assure you, she's fine with that.
I'd like to motion to approve the job description.
All right, thank you.
A second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Cam?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number nine is consider approval of the job description for the new position of Sales and Rental Coordinator and approved placement and payroll... All right, thank you.
A second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number nine is consider approval of the job description for the new position of Sales and Rental Coordinator and approved placement in pay range 47 as Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, this is the Sales and Rental Coordinator for the new Recreation Center. This is a budgeted position. We've talked about it in our meetings the last couple of weeks. Well, this is budgeted for this year. We'll hire this position very soon after the start of the next fiscal year. We'll begin advertising it right away. It's pay range 47, it's about $35,000. Primary responsibilities will be selling the passes and fees for the Recreation Center, the aquatic park, and supervising the front desk personnel. So with that, I'll be happy to take any questions you might have.
Make a motion to approve this job description.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this? It's looking like it's coming up pretty well. What are those, are those pavilions that they're building now to the south end of the building? Is that what that is?
The farmer's market area. What's that? Farmers market area. Yeah, the farmer's market.
Okay, that looks really nice out there.
Yeah, we're excited.
It looks nice.
Do you have any issues with water?
No, no, no. It's, you know, it's a dirt construction site, and there's water standing where there shouldn't be just because it's not a finished site yet. So far, it's been fine.
Would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item carries. At this time, we'll recess the City Council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item number 10 is the consent docket. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held May 4, 2015. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2014, 2015 in the amount of $110,836.2.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item 11 is a consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held May 4, 2015. Item B, approved payment of a court-ordered workers' compensation settlement in the amount of $40,375 to Kevin Goodnight for claim number 2014-05280Q, authorize placement on the property tax rails and supplement the budget accordingly. Item C, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2014, 2015 in the amount of $207,450.24.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Summit.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? These are, sorry, my needs are consent docket. Would you call for the vote, please?
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and convene the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting. Is that, is that, is that our vice chair? Is that not David?
That's right. Would you call for a roll, please?
Mark Ham?
Yes, here.
Robert Kraus?
Please.
Jason Blair?
Here.
Melissa Hunt?
Here.
Glenn Lewis?
Here.
David Roberts?
Here.
Item number 13, Part A, is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Economic Development Authority meeting held April 20, 2015.
Move to approve.
Second.
Would you call for a roll, please?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
At this time, we will recess the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting and convene the City Council.
All right, thank you. Let the record reflect that all the members were present before, are still present. Item A is citizens' forum for items not on the agenda. There's no one signed up. Would anyone like to speak? Okay. Item B is items from the City Council or trustees.
A quick thing. I noticed on our social media that we were running a competition for the Dog Park $100, like similar probably to the Veterans Park. Where, do we have the money to do that? Does that come through? Or what is, I know we passed it, we talked to voters, they were.
The voter-approved Dog Park is going to be built at 12th Street Park, Buck Thomas Park. Those funds are set aside and will be built. This campaign was nominated by someone outside of the city, and we would covet the opportunity to win and would certainly take that money and build a bigger, better Dog Park over there and probably a second Dog Park somewhere else in the community. But whether that happens or not, the Dog Park will be built. Yes, sir.
Anybody else? Well, of course, no flooding this week, so we're good. They said that the flood was a 200-year flood? Is that what, the final, again, do you know, was that what we ended up with, a 200-year flood?
It's sort of a 100.
The consulting.
Never heard of the 200.
The consulting engineer that's doing our master drainage plan estimates it about a 200-year flood, which.
And we have more rain coming, so. Yeah, we've had three of those F-5 tornadoes, this one in a lifetime, too.
Was there a good turnout at the meeting one?
There was a very good turnout. The circumstances of the flooding brought out some folks, which is good. We needed to know that to tell us about problems that we may not have been aware of or that are new areas of problems. And they brought up certainly areas of concern that we have known about. So we did get a good turnout, and we appreciated that, yeah.
Anybody else?
Any items from the City?
Just a couple, Mayor. One is that we need to have you all together in a budget study meeting. We would normally have that next Monday evening, but that's Memorial Day. So any evening after that, if we could come to a consensus of Tuesday through Thursday of next week, that would be available on your calendars. We need to do that. So any day that won't work.
Thursday, we're moving our offices, so that would put me out.
Tuesday evening, the 28th and 6th, I believe it would be. Is that okay with everybody?
It's okay.
6:30, 7, 6:30? All right, we'll do that.
6:30 to 26.
Yes, sir.
All right.
I also wanted to say just a couple of words with regard to some of our activities in our departments. We had a very successful bike war event Saturday, and Elizabeth's department, Police Department, Didero's department with putting it out to the public. Several groups were involved with that, but very successful. 102, I'm told, registrants in that, which is by far the most we've ever had, I think, or definitely more than we've ever had. So thank you to those folks who did that, but also the folks who came out and enjoyed the weather in the morning of that day, anyway. So thank you. And the mayor mentioned the weather. We owe a debt of thanks to our volunteers and our Galen's employees and all of our folks who respond to those and who are ready for those. I can tell you, we're all about tired of it right now, but still, still trudging along. So, and I also just wanted to mention our Animal Control Department and the folks over there. John Fryear is our, how does he pronounce it? Fryrear? Close enough. John is our animal control supervisor, and they've been doing some amazing things down there with the animal control facility. They hosted a Oklahoma Association of Animal Control Officers meeting, two-day meeting in Moore or so ago, and had a lot of folks in town for that and really have done some great things. So just appreciate that from where we've been to where we are now is nice to see. And thank you, Katie. Katie is our rollover taker tonight, taking care of her place. It was a little under the weather, but that's all I have.
Okay. Item 15 is adjourned.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
We are adjourned. Thank you for coming.[1791.91]